Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, it is six o'clock. We will close the executive session of the city council and we will open the workshop and we will open the main meeting at on March 28th. Roman, are you ready for prayer?
I am ready. You'll stand and go bow your head and I invite you to join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for the abundant blessings that you've bestowed upon us, our city and our nation. I thank you for the life that you've provided us, for the beautiful nature and the city that you've provided us, for the measure of health that you provide us and the calling that you've put on each of our lives. I thank you for the citizens in this room and throughout our community. I thank you for the people who you've called to lead our community. I ask that you continue to guide us as we work through the issues for the betterment of all and as we work to glorify you. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, spirit of justice and the spirit of love. And I ask and pray that everyone feels blessed and enjoys this meeting and all that it has to offer. We pray all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements, Stuart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me say the most important thing and that's we have a little rain outside. Glad to do that. We have two big activities coming up this weekend. First one is Friday night, the Concerts by the River, the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department's Concert by the River Series kicks off this Friday, March 31st. I think we have a couple of country and western themed musical artists this week, is that correct? Right. Mike Blakely and then a dual Fred Bird. It's a family friendly event begins at 7:00 PM at Louise Hayes Park. Check the temperature earlier and it's supposed to be like 80 degrees at seven o'clock. So I encourage everybody to come on out, bring something, sit down and have a good time. There'll be several more as we go through the summer, spring and summer. All right, and then Saturday, a big event, the Kerrville Eclipse Kickoff Party. I think we're just about a year away from the second of these, but we'll talk about that in just a second. The library will be holding the Kerrville Eclipse Kickoff Party Saturday, April 1st from 10:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The event will include Hill Country astronomer Mark Ward speaking about the best ways to view the upcoming partial and total eclipses. First one, the partial eclipse will be in October of this year and then of course next year we have the total eclipse, which is April of 2024. There will also be a mobile planetarium on the main floor. I don't know if you saw the pictures we posted on this week or last week on Facebook, but it really looks cool inside. There's like five sessions for that and you need to make a reservation for them, but I can't wait to see what it looks like. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. They're going to be moving some of the computers out Friday to make room for that. So some of the computers will be down Friday and Saturday, but we'll be back to full functionality on Monday. Reservations are required for those live sessions. I don't know how they stand right now, but I would encourage everybody to sign up because it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. And then I don't have a slide for it, but I do want to mention, I saw Jeff over here, the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War is tomorrow. There's a service at noon at the Kirk County Memorial across the street, so we encourage everybody to show up for that too.
Did they change the time to 11:30? I thought they did.
I think it's noon.
Is it still noon?
Yeah, I think.
We got an email today saying it was 11:30 now.
I think he wanted participants there at 11:30.
Oh, okay.
The actual service begins at noon.
Okay.
And that's it for me, so I'll turn it over to y'all if you have any.
Thank you, Stuart. Council, anyone have anything they would like to mention? I wanted to thank Parks and Rec. They planted 10 chickapin oak trees over by the tennis court. So thank you, Ashley. Thank them for doing that. That's great. And then also congrats to the Glory Garden. They broke ground for restrooms last week. So that's something they have been working towards for a long time. So that's good. Okay, at this time, we have some accommodations for outgoing members of Parks and Rec. So if those who are here will join me up front. And do we have some board members too, Ashley, that might? This is the committee that has the most fun. All right, I think we have Eric Silvias, but he is not here, all right? And Wayne is here. Charles Huber is not here, correct? And Morgan Bond is not here. So I just, Wayne is the only one and these are all the board members, all right. So I'm going to read this with everyone's names and they all say the same thing. So we'll just go through it that way. City of Kerrville, resolution of accommodation, whereas Wayne Uger has served as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the date of service beginning March 26, 2019. And whereas Wayne Uger has served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, Wayne Uger be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. That's to approve this 28th day of March. So thank you. And Eric had, he started in April of 2021. Charles Huber started in March of 2019 and Morgan Bond started on the board in April of '21. So we will see that they get their combination. We'll get those to them. Do you want to introduce the board?
Yes, this is Dieter Flores. He's our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. And then we have David Bartels and Russell Nimpke, board members.
All right, well, thank all of you for serving and again, thank you, Wayne. We appreciate it. And this is yours and you guys, you're doing good stuff. We appreciate it.
I do want to say for the benefit of the council as well, you have one hell of a park director and one hell of a support staff. This is an amazing group that is in charge of what we play in. So support them in every way that you can because they're doing the things that they need to be doing.
Thank you.
They'll scoot in and make a picture. Look, they're going away from us this time. We'll be okay. I think we'll be okay this time.
Oh, okay, good.
Russell scoot over a little bit. No, the other way.
Wayne, shake some hands back here and you guys shake some hands, turn around. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to point to more tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, we are ready for our Visitors and Citizens Forum. Charlie?
We have one, Charlie McElvein.
Well, good evening, Mayor Eichner and council members. You may be asking why I'm retired in my Christmas finery this evening, right here at the end of March. I wanted to visit with you tonight about the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation's 2023 Streetlight Ornament Campaign. We are now underway. We're raising, our goal is to raise $100,000 to purchase 100 new ornaments, the zigzag tree ornaments that we have on Sydney Baker currently or through the Christmas season. And these new ornaments will be along Highway 27 and Main Street between the Minute Mart at Loop 536 and all the way to the west to Spur 99. They're between the two seafood restaurants. So that is our goal. We are into our fundraising now. As I mentioned, our goal is to raise $100,000. We're not here to not even ask for funding. We're going after the funding now. We've reached approximately 20% of this year's goal. So we're continuing to work hard on that, but we wanted to mainly make you aware of what was happening and what we're doing right now. We'll have those in place for this Christmas season.
Thank you, Charlie.
Any questions?
No, you know, it's interesting. I just remember like one of my childhood memories growing up in Kerrville was just at Christmas time, just catching the sparkle of those as you drove down Main Street and through town. Like it's really just, you know, etched in my brain. I'm so excited to see that back. It's just such a great visual.
Well, and this is something that will benefit not only the residents of Kerrville, but also the visitors coming in.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. We are ready for the consent agenda. Council, do we have, I believe we have asked, a citizen is asked to have 4B pulled. Is there any other that we need to pull?
Request to pull 4A.
4A and 4B have been pulled. All right, let's go ahead. Do we have a motion for 4C, 4D and 4E and F?
I'll move to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and it passes. Thank you. All right, let's go back to 4A. Roman?
Okay, so 4A, this is the resolution to authorize the Director of Parks and Rec to adjust fees. So one thing I was looking at, well first, I guess I should start out with, can you explain kind of what this does and why it's necessary for this to be in place? And what the process is if we don't have this other process in place to adjust fees?
Sure. So this resolution would be amending or repealing one that's been in place for about 10 years now. The purpose of the original and existing resolution would allow staff the flexibility to adjust fees on certain situations. For example, if we have large groups that want to come in and rent out Kerrville Shriner Park, we are able to negotiate some fees to help offset that and increase revenue and more specifically the solar eclipses that are coming in to town in 2023, 2024. We're looking to increase our 2024 fees to be able to capitalize on the premium rates for that event.
Just for that event?
Right now, that's the only one that we anticipate increasing fees for. Majority of the resolution purpose would be, like I said, negotiating, reducing fees, new special events that come to town, like the Veterans Day Parade last year, if you recall. That would give us the authority to look at that, to be able to weigh fees. So therefore, wouldn't have to necessarily come to council unless staff did not recommend doing so.
Okay, one of the things I was looking at was just the necessity for this to be in place. Because right now, I guess the process is if they want a fee waived, they have to come to council. That has to be approved and there's that process, right? So what I had to look at, when in the future, when we repeal something or like this or we don't have any of that information, I'd appreciate for it to be included. Because we are repealing a previous resolution, 08-2013. And for the benefit of the rest of council, I have documents in case you want to review what I'm looking at. A copy of what I'm referring to. Oh, I'm sorry. That's the wrong one. I passed out. Oh, that's the existing one. But Resolution 08-2013 did not give the director the ability to increase fees. This one now gives the ability to increase fees before it was just to adjust to decrease. And so I'm wondering why we're giving, why we're waiving and going about this process differently instead of coming to council to adjust the fees? Because the council approves the budget, adopts the budget and the fees schedules a part of the budget. And if the fees are going to be adjusted for a particular event like this, usually there is some type of, at least in the process when we do like the festivals down at the parks and you know, those main festivals and events, those come to us with an agreement where we waive the fees and then, you know, other provisions are in there. So I'm confused on why this is necessary and why we're giving the provision to increase the fees? Because this also seems like it impacts the citizens and now they'll have to pay an increased fee just because people are coming to our community.
Correct. Okay, so I'll address both in kind of two parts. The increase in fee is specifically geared towards the 2024 solar eclipse. We're evaluating our fee schedule right now, determining what fees we want to do to increase. We're not, staff believes that it'll be of the best interest of the city instead of putting a separate line item in the FY24 budget specifically for KSB, that we adjust those according to the resolution because we're not prepared to present it in that capacity yet. That by giving us the ability to be flexible and adjust the fees when we're ready to make the adjustments.
Would it be, would you be able to bring that to council and go about the process that we regularly do for other events and say, this is what we would like to adjust the fee? Either in the terms of decreasing, just a hypothetical, waiving it like we usually do or increase this fee and it doesn't have to necessarily be a budget adjustment, but it can be council's action to adjust those as we need?
We've got over 30 different facilities and we've got, we're fielding requests on a daily basis, particularly for that premium event, potentially also for the October event. Certainly if it's council's purview for us to bring every inquiry to you all and have you all evaluate that on a case by case basis. This just gives you essentially, you know, provides latitude for staff to help negotiate those pieces and maximize, you know, value for the community in those assets, renting those assets essentially.
And these fees, they're applied citywide, so any citizen who wants to take advantage of this facility, if the fees increase, they'll have to pay that increased fee. It's not just for visitors coming into Kerrville, correct?
It's essentially for anybody who's wanting to utilize the asset.
Okay, so for this big event that we're having, because we're going to have an influx of traffic in terms of people coming to our community, just because there are more people coming to our city, our citizens, if they want to take advantage of those facilities at the parks that their taxpayers' dollars already pay to maintain and provide, they're going to have to pay an increased fee.
This would be for overnight facilities. We don't anticipate locals spending the night in their own community for this event. If that were to be the case, I would assume that would be very rare. This is no different than, for example, the hotels, you know, increasing rates for premium times of the year. Additionally, we're wanting to open up the reservations beginning April 1st. The budget process would not have been adopted by this point and so the resolution would also provide us authority to be able to do so earlier to capture the year ahead worth of rentals.
Okay, if that's the case, I would like, because I don't, my, to council and to staff, I guess, what I would like to see happen, which I don't think is going to happen, is I would like us not to do this and not to approve this with the ability to increase it. I don't even think there's a need to decrease it, but there's already a resolution in effect to do that and so that's not on our agenda. It's just the amendment which wants to allow the increase of fees. That would be my first proposal. If that does not, is not favorable to the council, my second would be to leave the other amendments that were made because we took out something about the golf course. I think we had some type of staff member and that's no longer the case. So we took all that out, right? Cleaned up some language, basically. And so I would, my second proposal, if the first one doesn't hold with council, would be to just take out the increased provision so that the rates can't be increased. Then lastly, and I'm trying to do this in a tiered step because that one might not hold up either, my last one proposal would be to keep it strictly to the 2024 total solar eclipse event because this gives the ability for it to be increased for any other event after that or before that. And so I just want to make sure that it's very clear to the public about what fees are increased or adjusted for. So that's my kind of three tiered request. If it's not to just, my first one is again, not do anything. Second is.
Are you ready to make motions?
Well, sure, I would like discussion. That way I don't have to make three motions and, I mean, I'll make three motions and they can all fail if that's what happens, but. Okay, then my first motion would be to table this indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Okay, my second motion would be to amend, approve Resolution Number 11-2023 with an amendment to remove the ability for increased fees.
Is there a second? Third motion, please.
So I come prepared for all this. My third proposal would be to adopt Resolution Number 11-2023 and amend it to the effect that the adjustment of fees will only apply to the 2024 total solar eclipse.
Is there a second? There is not. Just very personally, I feel that we don't need to get into the weeds of making all of these decisions. And I think leaving this up to Parks and Rec, who have been very fair and know what's going on and know what they can do and can't do, I think that it's, I think we're good leaving it with them, so.
Well, just to clarify, this isn't getting in the weeds. This is giving them further authority that, relinquishing our authority that we already have and that we already exercised with a lot of other events to adjust fees. So I'm not saying, I completely trust our staff and that they know what they're doing and this has nothing to do with the trust of staff or the ability for them to do that in the Parks Department, Parks and Rec Department. This is more of if we relinquish that authority and that duty that council has to the fiscal responsibility that we have, then what are we doing up here? Because then we're just, in that sense, in that respect, with the duties that we're charged with, we're no longer necessary.
I just disagree with your verbiage. I don't think we're relinquishing. I think we're delegating.
And then after that, there's no check though. So it doesn't come to us for final approval, so we are relinquishing.
In your opinion.
Okay.
Can I make a motion? You may make a motion, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11-2023.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. It passes for, or I'm sorry, does it pass? It's four against one. And it's Mr. Garcia who is against. All right, thank you. Let's move to 4B. Charlie, do you want to read that for us?
Sure, I sure will. Professional Services Agreement with Fries and Nichols, Inc. For the wastewater treatment plant clarified number three rehabilitation project in the amount of $165,000. And our speaker is Peggy McKay.
Thank you.
I want you to know I did this in your presentation. You go first. Oh, because it's the old item.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester, Kerrville. I'm coming to talk to you again because I'm still concerned about our water situation and that's a subject of this particular agenda item. And this reminded me about our last notice from the TCEQ on the TTHM, which I'm thinking is a part of what this study will be. I, I believe we have been putting more wants before our needs and I think our water is a critical item. This TTHM has been going on since 2010 or 2012 and a lot of money has been spent by councils to try to take care of the problem, but it continues to haunt us. The latest notice is in an area that includes our middle and high school. And as I understand, the carcinogenics are especially critical in the younger people. That is the age group that this particular problem is a critical item. Infrastructure I know is costly. And because it's so costly and the latest study identified, I think, 20 million in needs for our water and wastewater to take care of our needs. I'm concerned that when we go to EIC to borrow, we take on quality of life projects. And I think that's a want and it's wonderful for the town, but I think we really need the water quality. If we partnership with EIC, rather than doing quality of life projects, I would like to see us put as much money as we can into water. And we, if we approach it in a logical manner, perhaps we can take on projects that will not turn into something critical and be an emergency. And what also brought this to mind is that I was in Waco this weekend and I could not believe the quality of their drinking water. And I realized that somehow ours has gone, lost a little of its luster. Whether that's in the chemicals that we have to add because of our drought, I don't know. I'm sorry about my voice. But I could tell the difference in the water. It tasted like Kerrville water used to taste. And I hope we can approach needs first rather than wants. And then when we have that done, all the quality of life items that come up, I'm happy to see that handled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to offer some words?
Just covered a lot of ground there, but first of all, this plant is at the wastewater treatment plant. It's actually a clarifier out there, so it's not related to the TTHMs at all. But it is a failing component. It was noted in our TCEQ review that there's, the hood on the clarifier itself is actually starting to rust apart and the trough is getting ready to short circuit. So it was actually moved pretty high on the list of projects that we needed to do for that project. Can talk a little bit about TTHMs. I really wasn't prepared to talk about that, but if I recall right, Waco is actually on groundwater and that's probably why their water tastes a little better than ours. And we've been in a severe drought with a bunch of concentrated stuff in the river water. We've been using groundwater and river water right now, so there is a little bit of it. It's not really apples to apples, but it does meet all TCEQ requirements and we've met their requirements, the last three testing. Matter of fact, we were just given notice today. I think that they're going to come and do our sampling again. We're staying up with our sampling and doing what they tell us to do, so.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick reminder, I think you all read it to it. Stuart was getting in, coming to the dais here earlier. We provided a pretty extensive workshop on water and wastewater needs to you all last Tuesday in addition to, you know, our current drought conditions and where we're at and the numerous investments that the community has made over time to ensure not only that you have high quality of water, but extensive amount of that supply of water, which is a much different situation than certainly, you know, our neighbors in the county or certainly adjacent counties are experiencing. And we did a presentation before that, actually I think back in the January timeframe, where we went through about 100 million plus of water wastewater needs that are long term, over multiple decades. This community has been very aggressive and EIC has been a great funding partner for us. As you recall, actually just downstream from this project, EIC invested quite a bit of money in the Legion Lift Station. They invested in the Nap Road infrastructure as well as other numerous projects. So certainly continue to be very strong on infrastructure and that backbone for our community.
All right, do we have a motion?
Remove that we, um, sorry, thank you. Authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the professional services agreement.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it passes five to one. Thank you very much.
Five to one.
There's only two persons.
Oh, I'm sorry, five to zero. Excuse me, that's right, that was important. All right, thank you. All right, 5A, you would read that in, Shelley?
Resolution number 10 dash 2023, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a utility private or franchise on property consisting of approximately 0.011 acres out of the John A. Southmids survey number 148, abstract number 288 in Kirk County, Texas. Said property being within the 517.2 acre tract known as Kerrville-Shroner Park, located at 2385 State Highway 173. Said property is located within the public and institutional PI zoning district and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew.
Good evening. Uh, this is a conditional use permit for a private utility. Um, Hill Country Telephone Company was needing a place to, um, extend a cabinet for their infrastructure along 173. Uh, current zoning is pub- or, excuse me, current land use is, uh, parks and open space. Current zoning is public and institutional for the park. Um, all zoning districts require a conditional use permit for the private utility installations, um, so that we can take a look to see if that is an appropriate location. Uh, here's just an aerial showing the scale of that. Um, it's a little bit bigger than a parking space overall. And here's a photograph of similar equipment, similar installation. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this on February 2nd and recommended it for your approval. If you please answer any questions.
Any questions for Drew's staff? Or staff? Counsel? All right, thank you, sir.
This is a two-part, uh, consideration. Obviously you do have the public hearing and resolution on 5A. You also have the easement, uh, related to the same topic on 6A. So just bringing your awareness to that.
All right, do we have a motion for 5A?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, that's right. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Open the public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm, thank you. Well, at 6:32, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right, at 6:33, we will close the public hearing. And we have a motion and we have a second?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 10 dash 2023.
And a second?
Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes five zero. Thank you very much. Drew, uh, or Shelley first?
Easement agreement for broadband communication equipment granted by the city of Kerrville, Texas to Hill Country Telephone Cooperative, Inc. On 0.011 acres out of the portion of Kerrville-Shroner Park, 2385 State Highway 173. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Drew?
Uh, this is, this is the easement for segment, um, subst- I guess not substation, uh, risers for their utilities. Uh, we have worked with HCTC, um, as you have a copy in your backup, they've signed the agreement and agreed to the conditions therein, so.
We own the property, they have the right to install and maintain.
Correct. They'll have access most likely from 173. Should they need access, they'll work with Parks Department to get access for anything larger than that.
And this isn't anything that someone else could be using. This will strictly be for HCTC, right?
That's correct.
All right, uh, do we have a motion? Do we, it, we don't, not a public hearing, no. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the recording of the easement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have two seconds. Give it to one or the other. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes five zero. All right, thank you. And we are ready for 7A and.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 10, an ordinance amending chapter 66, library of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by amending Article 2 Library Advisory Board to reduce the number of members of the Library Advisory Board containing a cumulative clause containing a savings severability clause and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, before we actually, uh, talk about this amongst the council, I would like to, um, offer some information, uh, that has to do with why we are doing this. As everyone knows, uh, Monday, uh, March 13th, the interlocal agreement between the county and the city was terminated. And that interlocal agreement was for provision of animal services within the city of Kerrville and free library services for residents of Kirk County. Over the last several months, representatives from both the city and the county have met to discuss this interlocal. It has been mutually decided that there is no longer a governmental need to continue this agreement. As we move forward, the library will become the sole responsibility of the city and animal services will become the sole responsibility of the county. It has been mutually agreed that the county, as the rabies control authority, will continue to provide the very same level of service as it has in the past and currently does to all residents of both Kirk County and the city of Kerrville. It has also been mutually agreed that the city of Kerrville will continue to pro- provide access to the Bud Holesworth Library as it has in the past and currently does at no cost to all residents of Kirk County and the city of Kerrville. It is also mutually agreed that because of the termination of the interlocal agreement and no involvement with the library on the part of the county in the future, the appointment of a county commissioner to the library board will also be terminated. It had been put in place with the passing of an ordinance and it must be terminated the same way. So that is what we are doing with this next agenda item. I do want to add a thank you to the county for their time and their willingness to examine and work through the terms of this agreement. When an agreement is no longer mutually beneficial or effective, it is time to do away with it. And both the city and the county mutually agreed that this interlocal agreement had reached that point. So at this point then, uh, Shelley, if you, uh, did you read that in?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's right, okay, that's where we are, so, um.
It would be, um, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Meismer, who would? Do you have any questions?
We don't have any further presentation for council. We're happy to answer any questions you may all have. Uh, you, uh, asked us to put this on your agenda at your last council meeting.
Yes.
Based off of, uh, your feedback, uh, we've provided the, uh, draft copy of the ordinance, uh, in front of you.
Any comments, counsel?
I just have one, um, point to add. And that is that I believe that the city's representation on the county animal advisory board is also dissolved at this point. Is that correct?
There would be no city staff on.
Well, we have a representative, the city has a representative that sits on that animal advisory board. And I, I didn't know whether you had had that discussion.
We had, and that board will be, uh, appointments for that board will be strictly up to the county.
Right, so there won't be city representation on that animal advisory board anymore. Okay, that, that answers my question.
Any other questions, comments, counsel?
I do. Sorry, I'm quickly drawing down my notes because, Mayor, you brought up a lot of information that I kind of wasn't aware of. Um, not exactly relating to this agenda item, but, um, I'm really curious now on some of the information that was just shared, who were the representatives from the city? Because I know the county's representatives were appointed by the commissioners' court, but the city never appointed representatives.
It was, uh, the city manager and myself.
Okay, so when we talk about, when you mentioned the people, well, then, and then first, I guess, I gotta, before I go there, how did the city manager and you get picked as the representatives?
We decided it was best for us to do it, the two of us.
So without asking the rest of the members, of the members who actually run the city, the elected officials, you two went and decided amongst yourselves that it was best.
Well, we had also been.
Excuse me, you, well, I just want to finish, make sure I'm understanding this clearly. You went, the two of you, without asking the actual elected officials of this body and of the city, for you two, you decided votes yourselves unilaterally that you two would be the people who would represent the city's interests and talk with the two commissioners.
Mayor, I can ask, may I ask a question regarding that?
Yes.
Um, the Animal Services Advisory Board was instituted before you were mayor. Is that been the practice of the city before mayor, I think, that it's been done that way?
Uh, I'm sorry, excuse me, my time's still going and I'd like to finish my line of inquiry before we get to that because I'd rather, if I can finish mine, then you can use your time for yours respectively.
We'll, we'll do that, Kim, if that's okay.
Yes, it's my time's still going. So when we talk about these terms were mutually agreed, that the animal services will stay the same for the city and that the library services are staying the same for the county. To be clear, that was never discussed with the rest of council. That was mutually agreed without the council's approval, that that would continue, right?
You're still talking.
I'm asking a question, I said, correct, is that right?
We had been in conversation with them prior to that, we continued that conversation.
Okay, so how can we allow those services to continue the same when previously they were the same under that interlocal agreement? And as you just correctly stated, that interlocal agreement is now terminated. So because those provisions are terminated, the legally enforceable agreement is terminated. No provisions about those two are ever, are in existence right now. How do we have a mutual agreement with them if the county has not approved it? I, I'm assuming they haven't, and I know the city has not approved that agreement. How can we have some type of agreement without the approval of the body?
Simply, we met and it was agreed that it would simply terminate. But we were not, we were not going, we did not take it any further.
So it.
I, I, you may not re- know, but Jonathan Latch read the exact same statement at the commissioners' court yesterday.
Right, uh, I, I'm aware of that and I'm just confused because on the city's part of it, I don't have anything to do with the county commissioners' court. So I'm trying to figure out from the city's perspective, why wasn't the members of council aware that these negotiations were going on and that, because like you just said, you agreed that it would be terminated. Right.
Because they initiated the termination.
So there was, we had no say in whether it would continue to exist unless something were, were worked out. But nothing was worked out, so it was terminated, the provision no longer exists. So how can those services continue in effect when the agreement is terminated?
Because the services are done by, we do the library, they do animal services. That's what they were doing before. All of that will remain the same, but there is no written agreement between the two, uh, parties.
So how can that stay the same when before, in order for that, those services to be provided, the county, the city had to vote on it? And now, since it's terminated, the city didn't have to vote in order for those services to stay the same?
It, the county terminated it and the contract ran out.
Right, and that's what I'm so confused about. So how do we have services that are still in effect when we no longer have an agreement?
Would you prefer to charge county residents for use of the library?
I would prefer that whatever provision.
Just answer the question.
No, I would prefer whatever provision.
Would you prefer to charge the county residents for use of the library?
We can, we can work out a different agreement.
Would you prefer?
We can work out a different agreement, but the problem is, excuse me, this is my time.
Or no?
Counsel, I, this is my time, excuse me. We can figure out what we want to do, but my concern is the city had no.
Two. Yes or no?
That was completely disrespectful and I would appreciate it next time. You allow me my full time. Do not interrupt me again, please.
Roman.
And next time, there's no reason to be rude and try to count down my time. That was absolutely unforgivable.
Roman, your time is up, your time was up. And we had an agreement that went away and so the services will be the same on both sides.
But they shouldn't be because it's away, it's gone. You're making no sense, Mayor.
No.
Mayor, if I could just provide maybe a little bit of historical background to help, uh, refresh. So, um, the interlocal agreement for, uh, animal services is actually, um, historically, and, and Mike might want to chime in there too. There was an agreement put in place around 2001, 2003, when the existing, uh, shelter off Loop 534 was created. Uh, over some period of time, that went away. Um, there were various fees that were implemented over time, um, but specifically kind of jumping forward to the mid 2000s. Uh, in about 2015 timeframe, there was a charge that was being charged by the city for residents of the county that live outside of the city limits. That changed when the interlocal was reinstituted in the 2017 timeframe. And so that was one of the key differences between, uh, the interlocal, um, that, that modified that from the practice that was occurring at that time. Um, I think what the mayor's trying to elaborate on is that the service provision for both entities, the county has some statutory obligations in regards to animal services for all county residents. Um, the city has the purview of library services, uh, and who is charged those fees or not. Certainly, there's a budget amendment and a fee schedule change that is on your agenda later today. And you all can decide and make those different service provisions to go back to a different, uh, philosophical approach to what was in place when there wasn't an interlocal, uh, previously.
And to, and to further that, uh, that was exactly my point that I was going to bring up is, is we have to adjust a fee schedule if we decide to start charging library residents for library services. So what we have in place is currently that we don't have any fees for county residents to use library services. So I believe that that means that we are not changing from what's been done as of now, which is existing policy saying that we're not charging that because we don't have that in a fee schedule. And I would suggest that if a council member wants to start charging county residents, then they would bring forward an item on a future agenda to add a fee if that is in ca- in fact what the problem is with the situation. And, um, in, unless that's the case, then, um, I, I see that we're providing the same level of service, um, to our county residents. I don't see that, that there's a change being made unless tonight or at any other time a council member wants us to entertain the idea of charging county residents. Uh, I don't, so that's, that's my statement.
And my intention.
No, excuse me, council member Garcia, this is my time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And you've already used your five minutes.
We have five minutes at one time, I'm allowed to use another five minutes.
I'm sorry, this is my time and you're not going to speak during my time.
I'll, I'll allow you to finish, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything else to say, but I'm not going to allow you to speak during my time.
Okay, so we'll run out three and a half minutes.
No, no, we don't need to run it out, my time is over. And now other council members can speak, which is Councilmember Hughes or Councilmember Herring or the mayor. They have five minutes as well.
So at this time, at this time, uh, is there, there's a motion I'd like to make. Okay.
I'd like discussion on the motion.
That we approve ordinance number 2023 dash 10 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have a comment?
I just want to clarify, my intent has been sta- people have been trying to assume what my intent is. Never once did I say anything about raising or charging the fees for county residents. So please take that very clearly. And I would appreciate that you allow my comments to speak for themselves and no one else on this body or anybody else try to speak for me. My concern was that there was agreement made behind closed doors and that nobody on this council was made aware of that before. And I'd appreciate things to be done openly, transparently, the public is aware and the members of the, members of this body are made aware of that.
Okay, Mayor, can I, then, have my discussion now? Okay, so if you want to start my time, then, um, what I would say to that is to reiterate, we're providing services at a level that we will continue to provide. County is providing services that they have said they will continue to provide. County is providing services that they have said they will continue to provide. We don't have an agreement in place. We have an understanding in place. If we choose to change that understanding, then we would, as a body, make a decision to stop, reinstitute library fees. The county chooses, they have every right to choose that, because we don't have a written and signed agreement in place. I think what is being proposed is an understanding, a mutual understanding between parties. If that changes in the future, so be it. But I think it's disingenuous to state that something has been done behind closed doors, because there's nothing signed, there's nothing other than two parties having conversations saying, this is what we plan to continue to do. So I, I just, I think that's disingenuous, and I think if we want to further the conversation on our side, how would be, simply, do we want to consider charging library fees because we're continuing the same level of service, no change? So I, I don't see how some backdoor agreement is being talked about in this situation, because it doesn't exist in my mind.
The agreement ran out, and we let it run out, and then simply met with, with them to see if there was anything that could be done. There wasn't, and that's where we stand.
Mayor, don't you have the right to do that? Don't you have the right to meet with other elected officials and have a discussion?
Yes.
I thought so.
Not representing...
Are we ready to vote? We have a, a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes five to one. Four to one.
One to zero, four to one.
I've got one on my mind. I'm sorry. Four, five, zero. Thank you. All right, we are ready for eight A.
Seven B is ordinance number...
Oh, seven B.
2023-11, an ordinance in many of the city's fiscal year 2023 FY 2023 budget to reallocate funds for items encumbered within the city's fiscal year 2022 FY 2022 budget, but where such items were neither received nor paid for during FY 2022. To transfer unspent FY 2022 street maintenance funds to the FY 2023 Capital Projects Fund, to amend and add a fee to the fee schedule, and to make other amendments as provided. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Mayor, council, I presented this to you at the last workshop, so without going through it again, I do have my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have relating to the amendment, if there's anything I can help you with.
You did a good presentation.
Pretty simple.
Yes, you did.
This one's pretty clean.
Yep.
Okay.
Reminder, this is just cleaned up basically from end of year FY 22, and essentially allocation to that, for the most part, into the savings accounts, so that they could afford capital assets and other infrastructures.
All right. Do we have a motion, counsel?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2023-11 on first reading.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes five, zero. I'll get it right. All right, Julie, take us away for eight A.
Okie doke. Very quick financial update here for you guys. So just to give you a really quick update on where we are with budgets, and departments have all put in their budget requests, so Finance is reviewing those and working with departments to get any questions answered or clarification. Asset replacement and facilities budget team, we've talked to you guys about a lot. We're finishing up our phase, and we'll be presenting our findings to admin next week with a lot of still work to do on that, but we feel like we're really making some progress there. We'll receive our preliminary property tax roll from Kirk CADD sometime in April, so we can start working towards that. Keep in mind, there's a big difference between what we receive in April and what we receive in July through that process, but at least gives us a starting point so that we can start working on our revenue side. We're working on our other revenue projections as well, a lot as we talked about last week in our presentation, both on water fund and the general fund in a little bit different manner. So kinda where we are right now with the budget process. Really quick update on inflation. I know we talk about this every month, but I think it's kinda the topic of everyone, you know, both city and, and citizens at this point. So I thought it was interesting, just to give you a little bit of history, so you have something you can see just over time. So 20-year history of inflation, we're not, you know, to where the worst we've ever seen. The Fed has a goal of 2% inflation, and that's why they keep increasing the rates to slow down spending. So we'll kinda see what the impact of that is over the next few months, but just kinda gave you some graphical information here, just to kinda show you historical inflation rates, and then also historical federal rate, fed rates. And I know we've talked about that a little bit in last year's budget process, just, we're not the highest that it's ever been. They're not really considering us in a recession at this point, but you can see the gray lines on the left chart there. Those are recessionary times or periods of recession. So February ended at 6%, with the high point being last June at 9.1, as we were working through the budget. Right now, we're at 4.58, so the 20-year high is over 5%. So continue to watch that, see what they do, and how that impacts, you know, overall economy and spending in general. General fund, right now, property tax is 95% collected, so you can see we're a little ahead of the estimated budget. Remember that that estimated budget, we use a four-year historical average on where we are percentage-wise at this period of time, so it's not a crystal ball, but it's, it's the best guide we have to project where we should be at this point in the year. Sales tax, really slowing down, 27,000 ahead of what our estimate was. That's really not a lot when you're considering sales tax and, and what we've been seeing over the past few years. But again, you know, we have a lot of weird stuff going on in the economy right now that, that's affecting that. Service revenues continue to be better than budget, primarily due to EMS. So we watch that. It's a little bit early to really make any projections, but we do watch all of these revenues every month. Recreation running behind, so kind of in line with sales tax, so inflation is affecting traveling, and you'll see that in the hot fund as well. So just seeing what the dynamics are in the next few months and how things change as we go into the spring and, and some of our events that we have coming up. Personnel on the expense side is better than budget, and we do have some staff shortage citywide, particularly in the general fund. There's some other components. Remember, personnel is not just staffing, but also training and, and group insurance and some other things that go into that total personnel category. So it's impacted in a lot of ways, so we have some ways, you know, to save when we get to a point where we need to save. And so, you know, we're looking at some, some things. Citywide departments are making adjustments and those kinda things, so make sure we stay in with our budget. Sales tax, just a little more information on that. So our 12-month rolling average as of last March, we're at 14% ahead of the prior year. Now we're at 7% on a 12-month rolling average, so watching those numbers come down, close to 4% on our increase month over month. So we're still ahead as far as we're making increases, just not the increases we were used to seeing. But at some point, we knew you can't maintain a 13, 15% increase forever. I mean, that's, so I think that we're in line with budget right now, but continue to do projections just based on, you know, what we're seeing, and then watch that over the next few months, so. Water fund, we talked extensively about this the other day, so I'll just quickly let you know, we feel really good about our water model. As we talked about, you can see on our water and sewer revenues there, where they are estimated to budget really close to what projections are, and those are difficult to project. So I feel like what we've built out is, is working so far. We'll see in the next few years if it, you know, shows the same kinda trend, if we're close to, to aligning that with revenues. Maintenance, again, you see that big expenditure there, $258,000 behind. Remember, after we approved the budget amendment, should you choose to do that on the second reading, that, that $180,000 total net loss will come back the other way, because we're gonna increase that maintenance line out for those carbon filters there. Quick update on revenue bonds, so standards and port, we got an update this weekend, actually. We got an A-plus rating for consideration for our revenue bond issuance. That's really strong when you're considering revenue bonds compared to a GO or CO or something like that. At this point, we're expecting to post the bonds for sale for pricing on April 10th, and then bring back to you on April 11th what that looks like, and, and how they sold and those kinda things, so we can actually get authority to make the actual sale. So a couple things still in the works on that. We do have our due diligence call tomorrow, so we'll be meeting with our underwriters tomorrow, just to get more information and to provide more information for them for the actual pricing. Development Services Fund, I know we talk about this a lot, it's a super volatile fund. We just never know from one year to the next. Right now, they're doing really well. They have some big projects kickoff that actually started at the end of last year. We just didn't receive revenue for them until the first of this year. So just kinda depends on what's going on in the community as far as growth, so just continue to watch that, and permits and those kinda things, and how that affects us on the water side too, as we talked about last week. So right now, their net is much better than the same period last year. That could, could change next month, just depending on what development does. So I think they're doing a pretty good job of estimating and knowing what projects are coming up, so they can start estimating revenues for next year. Occupancy tax, you'll see kinda same story as we saw with sales tax, so one kinda goes hand in hand with the other, because it's technically expendable income. So you're seeing that slow down, really still in line with budget, which is good. And remember, we have a healthy fund balance in the hot fund, so we're not in any, you know, concern or, or dire stress where that's concerned. But the last three months have been behind on occupancy tax from last year, so just continue to watch that. We're communicating with Julie at CVB just to kinda see what their feedback is and what they're hearing. But it isn't just us, that's, that's a, it's kinda a nationwide statistic right now on, on travel. So quick calendar update, so we just talked about bond pricing and ordinance for consideration. Again, with Kirk CADD sending over preliminary roll pretty soon, so we'll be talking about that. And then we'll have budget workshops coming up in the summer. In the meantime, we're happy to answer questions if anyone has any related to, you know, budget or anything else, if you wanna discuss process or any of those things, we're happy to work through that with you. And that is all I have tonight. Any questions on any of this?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Were we going to receive any information on the bond? I think the last time we spoke about it on the workshop, sometime around that time, y'all said y'all might have some information for us.
Just the rating, and we didn't get, we just got that this weekend. They must have sent it late Friday night, 'cause I saw it like Sunday morning. And so we just got that, so the bond rating for sure. And then, once we do post it, then we'll be able to tell you kinda what the interest rates are looking like at that point. And, you know, if we oversell, then, you know, there's a chance we could have a lower interest rate. It just depends on who the buyers are and, and how the underwriters decide to disperse those funds, so. But definitely be bringing that to, back to you on the 11th, once we see that posted.
Okay, but we're looking good.
I'm sorry.
But we're looking good, right?
Yes, and so far, everything is fine, whereas what Ann's estimations with interest are, we're in, we're within that range, so we're not expecting to see some big surprise that we didn't anticipate. And typically, she builds us in enough cushion so that we don't have any surprises. That's the whole, usually, I'd like to say it's better than, than we anticipated, so we'll see. So we're crossing our fingers for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Julie. All right, we have come to the last item on our agenda, appointments to Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Thank you. Councilmember Herring and I had a brief conversation, and as the two members of the interview team, I would like to, on behalf, I would like to reappoint, I'll make a motion, I'd like to make the two reappointments. Those two reappointments that are eligible are David Bartles and Michelle Yanez, and then we have four new appointments as well. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint David Bartles and Michelle Yanez to a second term. And then for new appointments, I'd like to move that we, sorry, I'd like to continue the motion to appoint Dalton Dover, Stephen Lynch, Lynn Paolo, and Juanita Yancey as new members to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second.
All right, we have a first and second. Do you need those names again, Shelley?
I can say them.
Dalton Dover, Stephen Lynch.
Lynn Paolo.
Okay.
And Juanita Yancey.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, and we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is five, zero. All right. Thank you for all. We have 14, I believe, did you mention that?
Yes, and I, I'm sorry, to, just to give a little context, one of the, one of the things that, that I talked to Councilmember Herring about was that one of the applicants has a specific interest in golf, and we really don't have someone in, that I'm aware of that has that as a particular interest. We also had, you know, some, some, you know, one person that who had a particular interest, specifically more directed at the Olympic pool. So just to, to include, be inclusive, you know, of as many parts of the park system as possible, however, there are, I mean, there are some really fantastic people on here that were not part of that list that we read. I would really strongly encourage those people to remain on the list, because it's not for lack of, of interest or resume that we chose who we did. There's, it's, it's great to be in a situation where we have this many good applicants.
Good applicants, and there were, they were all good applicants, yes. So thank, thank you to all of them who did apply, and we look forward to either having them on that in the future or another committee possibly, so. All right, counsel, we've reached the end of the meeting. Is there anything that, if anyone wants to put on an agenda for the future?
I do wanna take a personal moment and say, I apologize to counsel and to Councilmember Garcia for my outburst and losing my patience. It's, it was not called for, it was inappropriate.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else, anything to say, anything for the future? All right, and seven oh six, we will adjourn this. Have a good evening.